This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council at 6:00 PM. Roll call.
Jason Dally.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Michael Ferguson.
Present.
Joe.
Joe. Present. And I've neglected to say today is Wednesday, January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. So. For religions. Mr. Scott.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mayor's report. It's a reminder, the city council meeting that was on January first was adjourned until January twenty-ninth at six PM. So that'll be our next and last council meeting of the month. Deputy clerk position. We did connect, conduct interviews and we extended an offer to a highly qualified candidate and we are still waiting for our replies. Are we still waiting for a reply there? We are still waiting for a reply. We purchased the new used city truck. And it was, it's the dump truck style, so that looked very great. And.
I see a snowplow on there.
Don't read ahead. Spoilers, no spoilers. And there was enough money left over that we ended up getting the flail mower and the snowplow attachments for the tractor as well. And we only went over budget by about three hundred bucks and we can move that money around in the different implementments to get it. So, so, yes.
Everybody's happy.
I did get my snowplow.
That was purchased by utilizing the refund?
Uh, no, most of that was the remainder of the ARPA COVID relief money that we needed to expend by the end of the year. So, um, yep, all done. And I think the flail mower was arriving this week.
Here.
It's already showed up.
Just have to put it together.
Yeah, well. Big eight hundred pound thing, so I imagine you had other things going on, so. And snowplow end of February, so.
Okay.
Culvert and ditch maintenance, round two by Vader Public Works. They started this week. And so you'll see Darren and John around town with the mini dump truck and the, uh, and the excavator, cleaning out the ditches and replacing culverts. Darren, you said you got, you guys worked on B Street today?
B Street.
They're kind of following around the water folks, so. So that's going on. Reminder, updated city hall office hours. So we've moved our long day from Thursday to Wednesday now. So city hall's open until Wednesday, six o'clock on Wednesday nights and three PM Monday, Tuesday and Thursday. Also reminder, new schedules, city council is the first and third Wednesdays. Planning committee is the second Wednesday and parks will be fourth Wednesdays. And lastly, public hearing, January twenty-ninth. This will be for the four different development code updates for PUD sizing, short plats, the permit chapter and development agreements. Something to expect probably on the next agenda. If you remember during the budget season, we budgeted for some new chlorine pumps for the wastewater plant. Um, I know it was in there. Didn't talk about it a whole lot. We've got the, some of the estimates for that, so we'll probably have an authorization for council the next meeting to purchase those. And, um, and hopefully also on the next agenda will be to swear in a new deputy clerk. Council report.
How long do we have to hear back from this person?
On Friday. Friday at two o'clock.
Oh.
Friday at two o'clock. So, yeah, we just, uh, we had the last interview on Monday this week. And so it's only been a few days since we've extended the offer. Any members of the council have any reports?
You just, um, Discoverless County is having their next meeting on the twenty-third of January. At Main Avenue Coffee House. Anybody that'd like to attend, please let me know and I'll get you on the guest list. Basically, it's about discussing opportunities for promoting Vader as a city and how we would like to have the public look at us and advertise us as a city. And there's money available through the Alliance, Lewis County Alliance, which is funded from lodging taxes. So there's grant monies available through them for us to use for signage, internet advertisement, uh, those kind of things. And then we don't like have a theme mark here in Vader or anything like that, but we do have some things to offer. I, I don't. I like living in a small town, Joe.
Parsons could run it.
Yeah. Parsons could.
Got the credentials.
That's all I got.
Any other council reports? Okay, moving on to agenda approval. I don't have any additions.
A motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
We have a motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Parsons, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
A motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for the December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting and city council meeting minutes for January first, two thousand and twenty-five.
We have a motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve the two minuteses. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Daily. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval. Like, uh, I'm sure you've all looked at the vouchers already. The reason why it's so high is there are various grant-funded engineering fees that we're paying. We're going to get that money back from the grants once it's refunded and also, um, we bought a truck. So that's why the expenditures are so high this month.
A motion that we approve the extended December twenty twenty-four vouchers for ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, fifty-six cents, the first of January, twenty twenty-five, fifty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and twelve cents.
A motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve the vouchers as stated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Parsons. Discussion. But I heard the beginnings of a discussion, Jason.
Nope, I was gonna.
Okay. All right, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? And Randy, I, I didn't catch your vote. What's, what was your vote? In favor?
Aye.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Aye.
All right, special reports, Lewis County Sheriff's Department. Mr. Rubin.
What is it? For December two thousand and twenty-four, there's a total of two hundred and seventeen citizen contacts, one on shift call, thirteen traffic stops, and on shift calls were again one, off shift calls ten, total calls eleven, two custodial arrests, one for a violation of protection order.
Yeah, so Vader made their chronicle a couple of times for a repeat, repeat customer this, this last month, so.
It happens.
Any questions for deputy? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Uh, special reports, Althea Systems, Skyler Templeton. Skyler, if you're fun, so, uh, little disclaimer here, um, Lewis, the Lewis County PUD fiber optic system, that system is open to a variety of companies that can provide their systems or their services, so you can subscribe to them. Skyler is representing Althea Systems, which is one of those four companies. So I'm not endorsing, city Vader's not endorsing any particular company. Anyone could come and present, but he would like to come and present their services and talk about the system.
Thank you very much, Robert. I'm Skyler, from Althea. I grew up in Chalos my whole life, pretty much, so local business is a big part of what I do. My mom owns joyce once upon a time in Chalos, so keeping things local is a pretty, pretty big part of what I am, so. I just want to answer any questions you guys have. I know the whole new open access fiber thing is a little fuzzy to some people. Me and the PUD are kind of working with it. I'm working with Willie to kind of get information out better, so I figured we'd like to open it up with some questions to start, because we're all on the same page. Any questions on how, uh, how it works? So go ahead.
Yeah, so it seems like all the lines have been placed. So we're still, we still have our existing lines, like underground stuff that runs to the residence. So how's that work? So, because last year when it was open for application, I have a good account and internet's a big part of creating bids and all that. Like the disconnect from setting there essentially.
Yeah, I can give you a little insight, just to continue the question after I'm done. So the way PUD seems to be doing it is kind of rolling it out in stages. I've gotten about twenty-six people online already in Adna area and it's gone pretty well. They've done everything from aerials, from poles, to houses, as well as trenching in underneath. They've got some cool stuff to do that, so it's been kind of slow as it is getting, getting each passing done because they have to do them one at a time essentially and they only have so many crews. I think they're contracting out through Paramount, which is a company out in North. They send a group of guys down and with a couple of trucks and they do as many as they can in a week and then send it back.
They're lying boring, right?
Yeah, they, they have a little sonic board. They kind of get to steer along. It's kind of cool. It'll still kind of tear things up every little bit, but it does a pretty good job. And then they obviously, they already have the equipment, they're putting a box on the side of your house or building or whatever. Same, they try to put it as close to the power meter already, so they're kind of trying to follow that. If anyone wants to, there is a little demo setup in the PUD in Chalos. They have a demo set of what it looks like. If you have any questions, you can open it up, play around with it. It looks pretty nice, actually. All the installs I've seen so far have been really good. So what the open access providers do is we essentially get pulled by PUD that, hey, this person is finished. They've got their box hooked up. It's online. And then that person goes and will select their provider. You go to Lewis County PUD website, you put it under the broadband tab, you put in your address, it'll tell you if you're in a funded area or not. And you can go ahead and select whatever provider you want. Althea's on there. I think there's a couple others too. Everyone's got different packages. There is a couple business ones. We have one on there. But all of that is after you've essentially talked with the PUD first and gotten the line grant to get it to your house. I think it's a hundred dollars to get it from the pole to your house currently. I don't know what the stipulations on how long that grant's going to be around is. I'm assuming they're going to continue it. My biggest gripe with this current setup is that not everyone is on that list. They are only doing so many people here and there to spread it out as much as they can to start to kind of fill out their quota of needing to throw people online for the grant. So as soon as you can get on, check their address, contact the PUD. I've already got a list of names and addresses that were selected, but the sooner you go on and check, the more prepared you can be. You'll probably get a postcard from me at some point in time soon. It should be sent out in the next week or so, so.
So this is another application aside from the one that we had a year ago?
Yeah, so a year ago it was a seeing who's kind of interested thing, who's like actually committed to doing it. And then they go back through, I'm hoping they get everyone that contacted in. I would love it to be that. I don't know fully about what the PD's doing on that regard, though. It seems to me that most of the people that went on and signed up in Adna got it, so. And then they're doing a phase one, which is what this first pass will be, and then there'll be a phase two and three in later years, so. That's how they're working it so far. Does that answer your question, Ross? And then continue on if you have any more, so.
Reaffirming decisions that we've already made, so I like that.
Yeah. The speeds I've been seeing, they've been able to deliver the full gig up, gig down and really low latency. They even have a speed test server locally hosted. So when you go to speedtest.net, you can do a local Lewis County PUD speed test, so you can definitively know it's Lewis County PUD's network that you're getting the speed test to, not some speed test server up in Seattle or something. So you know where you're, where you stand locally everywhere, so, yeah.
Okay, why you over the other three?
Ah, yes. One, we are local. Two, we're the cheapest on there and we have a free setup. So I don't do, I don't charge for installation at home and the reason I can do that is because we're local and very bare bones. Like, we don't have a bunch of extra expenses for tons of extra things or company quotas or anything to make. We're just really big about community engagement and helping people, communities in need as far as connectivity goes. We do a lot of multi-drilling unit stuff in low-connected areas. We do a lot of stuff in rural parts. We did the farmers, or fiber for farmers out in, I want to say Alabama it was. We did a lot of fiber stuff to grain silos and stuff and then beam gig speeds between silos to get people connected. We do all sorts of stuff. We're very creative and nimble, so. That's why we keep costs low and be local and you know there's just someone down the road living in Chalos that'll make a house call to you, so. Yeah, which would be me, by the way. Yes, question?
I got a lot of questions, but.
Oh, wonderful. They're like questions. I don't have to talk to myself.
Jason's here kind of blinded me, so. You got more companies. Is there going to be? And I know Jason's question, some of them are different prices, but say, for example, you're the cheapest. Is there, your speed going to be the same?
Sorry, I should preface that. Cheapest as in we have zero upfront cost and we are sixty-eight eighty-five a month. There is a company that is, I think it's two hundred and forty-four for installation fee and fifty-five dollars a month, so. And their term contract, essentially you, you're the same. You'll spend a little bit more with them over that amount of time and then the contract ends and they can renegotiate terms with you. So as it is right now, the way this works is that PUD charges me or Althea a set number of, a set amount of money to start a customer up and then a set amount of money to keep it online every single month. So that's how it works. So unless the PUD changes drastically their cost to us, there's no reason for us to change. That is Althea's stance. I cannot speak for other companies. Good name, sorry.
Will you offer phone connection too?
We will not. We find it very hard to compete with services like Uma, which is a one-time fee of a hundred dollars and you get a phone for life, essentially a landline. I would highly recommend that if you pick a service, don't get phone through them, just get an Uma service. It's far cheaper. My mom at my restaurant does it in Chalos and she does our local internet as well, so. It works out way better than having to get like a secondary line set up, so I would recommend that.
I've been with Uma for about ten years.
Ah, yes, I believe her.
It's the, uh, I think one of the questions he was asking.
Speed question. So everyone offers you a gig. I have not seen yet that PUD is offering anything extra than that for residential customers or business for that matter. This could change in the future when they upgrade lines or have more capacity. But as it is right now, everyone should be getting with every single service, gig up, gig down. If they're not, if you pick a provider and you're not getting that, or at least close, I think there's a margin of error of like ten to fifteen percent of that, depending on network traffic and stuff like that when you run a speed test, because any web-based speed test is like finicky at best. You could run like an eye curve test to get the actual number anytime, pretty much. But you should get those fees all the time. Yeah.
Question number three.
Wonderful.
So we have four companies. After a year, we say, we don't like the company or somebody else's. Can we switch?
Yes, you can.
No problem.
Yep. Um, our Althea contract is actually, uh, I believe our initial one is monthly based too. So you could switch after a month without the, if you really wanted to.
Like you referring the other company.
The other companies all have their own contracts that you sign. I cannot speak for them, unfortunately. Yeah.
Some of them have a one year. I think the one that had the installation fee, you know, they charge less on a monthly basis, but they had the two hundred dollar installation fee. I think they had a twelve or thirteen month.
Yeah. They do, yeah. Yeah. But their plans, I raise the rate after a year. I would assume that's a typical practice.
Well, that's the end.
Yes, there are no data caps, which is super awesome. Because you'll see with things like Comcast where it's like, yes, you have eight hundred down and you're thirty out, but you can only down to a terrified of money now.
So you start with something, that's what they say it does.
Yes, and surely hasn't even, not even lower cap or sometimes two, depending on your region. Any other questions here, one?
I'm excited.
Yes.
You have a business card?
Yeah, I brought some flyers with me today, so if anyone is interested, they're, I'll give you one on your way out today. And again, thank you so much for having me today and, uh, I think I might come back for another one if you were.
Sure.
So I don't know if the crowd changes a lot, but thank you guys so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor, will there be another one with the other companies also?
So, um, Althea was the only one that got back to me. I did, I did contact, in my recent, people were asking me, uh, which one, which one should I sign up for? And I said, I have no idea. They all look the same to me and so I ended up, um, back in December, I reached out to all four companies trying to figure out who was who. It was like late night. It was like, like Christmas or something. I don't know what it was. It was midnight. I'm laying on my couch.
It was something, I remember, yeah.
And, uh, and so I'm on Facebook and I just messaged each company on Facebook and said, are you the one offering service in Vader? And Althea Systems replied, responds back immediately, the night on Christmas. Yeah, that's us. What's going on? Can I help you out? And I guess it was you.
It wasn't me.
And, uh, and we just started chatting and, uh, and I offered the ability to come and talk if they wanted to. And so that's how, that's, so if you wanted to know if Althea really did have local, all-hours customer service, it really did.
It's me. I'm not sitting on a football line right now.
And I think the Facebook page for that particular branch of Althea was Althea Centralia.
Yeah, they had to name it some sort of town name and Centralia is like the biggest one we search there.
So if you look at it for Althea Centralia, that was your local.
Something I would recommend you, the council, is to maybe get the PUD in here to talk about it a bit. I would reach out to Willie, he would probably be one that would have you come.
Yeah, Willie did say, yeah, he did say he was, once they got the system online and they were starting to hook a few people up, they were going to come and give a presentation again. He's been here a couple of times over the last couple of years, talking about this system, so I'm sure, I'm sure he'll be coming back pretty soon. But you were the first one after, after the, um, people were able to pay their hundred dollars and start getting signed up, so. So, and I have paid my hundred dollars and the construction company did stop by and say that we could expect the hookup to the house here pretty soon. And then, um, and then after that, then of course somebody can start working or getting whatever company we want, so.
What'd you say yours was, man?
Sixty-eight eighty-five. May I recommend to anyone that does get their installation done, put, you can tell them to put the box pretty much wherever within reason. The closer you get it to the point where you want the cable to come into your house, the better for one, meaning to yourself, because less cable is less latency in it and less room for nine predators and rodents and what, weed whacking, so on and so forth. I do my best, but, uh, the shorter the cable, the better. Have an idea both where you want the box and where you want the cable to enter your home and right on the other side of that wall is where the router should go.
Okay, so that's a good, that's a good thing to know. I was wondering about that for myself because our, our current phone box for our DSL lines is on the complete opposite side of the house from where we actually have our router.
Yeah.
And so, um, like my wondering was, were you going to use the copper lines? Like you were going to use like two or four of the twisted pair to like, to route it around or was it going to be fiber all the way to the, to the wall?
So it goes fiber to the box on the side of the house and then I take a, uh, an outdoor radio cat six cable and run it along the side of the house into the house.
Okay.
And then I try to not run it too much farther inside the house than I need to put the router in. And then if you have crawl spaces and like crawl spaces and they go through floors, I much prefer that than drilling walls in people's houses. Works out so much better. Especially when it comes to people level nine.
Okay, so that's great to know. And then you said that we can request it being wherever we want, not necessarily where the phone and the power is.
Exactly.
We could put it someplace else.
And then it's just barring, they all have the schematics of what's in the ground. But if it's an aerial, they should have much of a problem with it, as far as pending what's on the ground. You could do some requests.
Super, thank you.
Do you use a converter with your fiber to bring it back down to analog?
Uh, the OLT that they have on the, in the box and all that, yeah, and that's PUD's.
Yeah, because they're actually not using fiber if you're using a copper wall.
Well, it's fiber.
You're running fiber to the house, which you get inside, you're doing AT&amp;Ts, you know, when they did your digital, they had a converter inside the house.
No, it converts it at the OLT box of the wall, so PUD's fiber comes in and then they have, they totally have a copper house, which is the cat six, yeah. Would you get full of these, that's why you're getting like? Uh, well, it's a longer than three hundred inch. You can start with a little strictly, little strictly fiber, you'd have. But I wish I could run fiber straight into people's houses, but I don't have a fiber house. I would love to do that, trust me.
All right, well, super. Thank you so much. Again, his company was Althea Systems and he's the local representative, so, um, thank you for, for being here. All right, moving on to public comments. Any members of the public have any comments tonight?
I think you guys, Ryan, minus Steve, I'm from PL. It may depend on whether you guys do your meeting. And I think your meetings are one heck of a lot better than the ML's.
Oh, well, thank you.
And ML's also great. You got, you got onto the, you got on there and explained what everything was coming down the line, which don't happen in our town's meetings. The clerk reads off a few things, but you, you as the mayor, I got under his, talked about everything, got her with the purchase of your truck, your snowplow and for the PO and that, which we don't get that kind of. It's not put out to us, but are, what, just a voucher for ninety-five thousand dollars? And what's it for? Nobody really ever knows.
Well, our vouchers are, yeah, the, the stack of vouchers is right here in front of Jason. If anyone wanted to look at them, they, they could.
Everything we spin is right here.
See what that ninety-five thousand was, so that's available. Did you guys get a copy of the agenda? Is that, it's a good map.
He's a councilman.
Now, did, did you get a copy of our agenda? Usually, usually there's a stack of them right here, but our clerk was, was ill tonight and so. Public Works is standing in front. Darren's great, but he's not, he's not Christian.
You guys run your meetings like you should.
Yeah, usually we have those, those available, so. Thank you. I appreciate that you think we're doing all right. Any other public comments? Anyone on the line? Okay, moving on to city business. Item number one, council to consider the two thousand and twenty-five long range planning timeline and approach. There are two suggested motions at the end of that agenda bill. Obviously, last meeting, SBN Services was online and they gave a presentation about the comprehensive plan and how they're taking over from our previous planners. And so I believe they wanted an official document to provide to commerce, so that is what this is. James is actually online with SBN Planning. James, would you like to talk about the agenda bill?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, like, like Joe was saying, um, we really, you know, as a consultant, we really like to get very clear, direct motions to start work, to, you know, engage in work. And the, the reason that we put this schedule in front of you is, is really to work both ways. On, on one hand, you can hold us to it as we go through this project. It's a pretty aggressive timeline, but, but we fully intend to stick to it. And on the other hand, you know, we're able to just make sure that we're staying on top of everything. You know, requesting information. You know, requesting information when we need it, getting meetings with folks at the county and state levels, and at the city when we need it, and, you know, staying on, on track and, and on time. So that's, you know, the, the motions help keep the public record clear and make sure that we are, we are operating how the city wants us to. And this is sort of my proposal for how I think we can, you know, best accomplish these, these couple of projects. Really focused on, you know, how we're going to go through these, these public meetings. So the last thing I'll say is that this, you know, if, if you approve our timeline, you approve our approach, you know, you can refer to this and you'll be able to see what's coming down, coming down the line, and be certainly ready for what's gonna be in front of you over the next 11, 12 months. Yeah, and that's, I mean, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any concerns, any proposed changes or anything like that.
You have any questions for, for James? I, I really appreciate actually getting this timeline.
Really nice.
And, and having it, and having a reference, you know, obviously, we didn't get that previously from our last, our last planners, so. It's great to have this timeline and, and list of expectations, so.
We didn't receive any engagement like that.
No.
Feel like somebody might actually care about the job.
All right.
So there's two, there's two separate motions. One is for the comprehensive plan, and the second motion would be the follow-up to that, the climate action portion of it, because it's two different grants. So suggested, it's on the back of that first page, there's some suggested.
I'll make a motion that we direct the planning committee to review and revise the comprehensive plan with the city planner and recommend a draft plan to the city council.
Motion, Mr. Daly, on motion one, to direct the planning committee with the planner on the comprehensive plan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ferguson, discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And then the second part for the climate action plan?
Make a motion to direct the city planner to work with the city staff to form a climate policy action team and address climate planning compliance requirements with the CPAT support.
Motion, Mr. Daly, to direct the planner, staff on the climate action policy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ferguson, further discussion?
This is all grant, right? We're not spending money on climate change garbage.
You're right.
Okay.
You're spending.
Spending our other hard-earned money.
The state's money that.
Previously collected money.
From you already.
Yes, I'm glad I was able to contribute. What a blessing.
To, to work on climate activities for the, for the city, so, yes, you're correct. All right, we had a first, we had a second, correct?
Yep.
More discussion, observation?
Nothing I want to say out loud.
I know you really.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. And thank you, James, with SBN Planning.
Yep, thanks, Joe.
Moving on to item number two. Council to discuss legalization of marijuana businesses. So obviously, the history on that is that back in 2014, 15, when the states legalized it, the Vader City Council felt it wasn't right, businesses weren't right for the city. And so our codes do not allow it. That also means we don't get any of the state shared funds from the marijuana-related revenue per council's direction. I've done a little bit of research on that. I provided a, a letter to you with a variety of different links and, from other cities and their codes. As I mentioned, there's a lot of different things, different cities are doing related to this. There's many, many different aspects of this to consider on what we want in our codes if we do want to go down the route of legalizing marijuana businesses in town. And so I provided this to you, I know, I think it, was this yesterday? Was it yesterday?
Yesterday morning.
Okay, because I can't remember.
Early.
And so, so I know a lot of you probably haven't had time to look at it. But I did want to have this on the agenda and have that available to you. In your email, it's a PDF, and so you can click on those links instead of trying to type them all in to go to those different city codes. But the one, I really liked the one from Zillow Washington. They, they're an eastside town. A, a good code regarding marijuana, legal, legalizing it. They actually have a really good code with all of their regulations, but they still have a ban on it. So they, what they did is they put the, they, they put all the stuff in place, but then they, they still banned it. But, but they have a really good code still, so you could just not adopt that. Some things of note that they have. And a lot of the cities have this, they have an expanded list of restricted locations. So everyone knows you can't do it within, you can't have business 1,000 feet of schools, things like that. But some cities have been able to expand that list to churches, bus stops, all city facilities, things like that, and yet they still are able to collect the tax revenue for it. So that's something to, to consider and to think about, what, what Vader has as far as areas that are considered sensitive, where we might want businesses to be a distance from. And speaking of distances, there are cities that have reduced the minimum. So obviously, the state recommended is 1,000 feet. There are a lot of cities that have cut that down to 500, 300, 100 feet. Again, it just depends on, on your city and, and how you feel. Zillow also adds in that all activities must be taken, take place indoors and not outdoors. And so that would prohibit outdoor growing and things like that in, in the future if we were worried that a processor or would, would do that, so you can do that. Pierce County has.
Now, that's for, that's for personal recreational use.
No, this is businesses only. This is not related to personal recreational use. Businesses only.
Because we already, we already adopted an ordinance to allow for prescription, like to be in compliance with state guidelines for.
Correct, yeah, yeah. If you have a prescription license or card or whatever, yes.
It's actually a physician's recommendation, that's what it's called, because they can't prescribe it.
So, yeah, so this would be business-related activities.
Gotcha.
Yes, Mr. Thompson?
Would you like to make a comment?
Yeah.
If you do allow grow ops rather than just, just that service, a big thing you should look at is how often they clean their filters, what kind of closer systems they have, and waste is where. There's one right next to me on this restaurant, and you can definitely smell more times than others. And there's been like 103 things with, it comes to like related to the, the.
Controlled waste, that is a, that is a good, good idea. Pierce County, they have limited hours of operation for any, any stores. So they have in their code, stores can only be open from 8 until midnight, 8 a.m. to midnight, so not all night operations. Long Beach requires an annual fee with a mandatory annual onsite inspection. And so that, that is a thing they do. They also don't allow any processors along 100 feet of Pacific Highway, which I thought was interesting that they were able to pick certain roadways that they don't want it next to.
And they still get the revenue.
Right, and these are all cities that still get the revenue. And that, that was, that was the key.
And all of this, what does it cost for a grant?
Yeah, maybe 2,000.
It adds up.
Wenatchee, they don't allow it next to, anywhere near City Hall or other facilities. They go, they go a step further, and they talk about undeveloped or vacant school properties, which I thought was relevant to Vader.
Figured that would play a role.
Yep.
You wouldn't want them to establish a business, and then the school needs their space, and then.
Sheldon has a very comprehensive section on odor control, which I thought was, which was good. They talk, they do talk about active filtration systems, like I was talking about. And and also odors too, where there's just like a zero, a zero tolerance for, for that kind of thing.
Did you guys smell it across the street when they were growing across the street and processing?
We didn't. So Everett, so there's three different tiers of producers and processors, tier one, two, and three. Each one is progressively larger in the amount of square feet. Everett's actually limited it to tier one only, which is less than 4,000 square foot in size. And again, Everett, Everett still gets the tax revenue.
And back to answering your question, when they opened the doors on that, it stunk at my house.
But while they were growing and processing, you didn't smell anything?
They must have had really good, good filters, because
I don't know about that.
My daughter was not able to go into her backyard because the neighbor was growing, and the kids were like, what is that smell, mom? So it, it affects the neighbors and this town. I mean, we can't even burn because of the smoke doesn't go anywhere. We're not supposed to burn in this, in the city limits.
Really?
Huh?
No one's told me that.
Whatever.
You're gonna burn by the way right now.
I'm sure it's recreational.
It's only recreational fires.
But warming, it's a warming ceremonial.
So, and then, and lastly, one other thing I thought was interesting was that in Everett, they talked about the businesses themselves, and they, they stipulate that customer parking almost be on the public street side of the business. That way, there's no back alley parking and things like that to keep everything out front like a normal business, so. Anyway, so, point is, lots and lots of different options. Definitely take a look at this and see what is important to you.
Say we take all of them and combine them together?
Just this one giant thing. I did.
You mean like this?
I did go, I did have a map. I didn't print it out because it was too busy. But all of our parks, schools, city facilities, things like that, I put a thousand square foot circle around everything. And pretty much the entire city was covered with a no, with a no-business zone. And of course, we would limit it, I would imagine we would limit businesses to our, our commercial zones anyway. But pretty much the entire populated city was, was, was blocked out. And even over, over the city limits, partway to Dollar General as well, was, was, was covered, so.
So if we increase that to 1,500, we're good?
So, yeah, I don't know.
It would be covered with the, with the stipulations it is now. The only place that I'd see that would be able to, whatever, have, have a store would be once we took in our UGAs and it was way down on Wenlock Vader Road somewhere.
If, and, right. That was even the commercial zone by the time we're done with it.
Yeah, and, not likely. I, I don't even think it's likely that it would be here. So I'm just saying, it's free money. That's what she's into too. It's very unlikely that it's ever happened here. But it's, but it's likely every year to get $2,000 to put towards our parks or to put towards sidewalks, to put towards, you know.
Do they have to be a growing operation?
No, just.
Right, so there's three, yeah, the state has three different types of businesses that you can get your license from. You can get a producer, a processor, or a retail business license. And so you can restrict them differently.
Retail, you shouldn't smell anything.
Right.
But a growing operation.
Yeah, the history of it, back in 2014, in our industrial area here in town, the owner of the property was intending to put a producing and processing facility there, a very large one, and he even offered up that he intended to eventually expand outdoors with it. And at the time, the city said, that's not what we want. It's bad for our little town, and like Mr. Parsons was saying, Little Valley, and everything stays here all day long, so. It wouldn't be good. And so, and so we had a, a total ban on, on businesses here in town. But said, city council's reconsidering. And Vader's not alone in my, in my research. There are a number of towns that over, over the years since 2014, 15, that have reconsidered and, and have, and even recently gone back and started looking at it differently as kind of things have calmed down.
Retail?
So if you ban any of them outright, you do not get any of the shared revenues. Yeah, if you ban anyone outright, you don't get any of the shared revenue. So.
Isn't that what we're trying to do, is get the revenue?
That's, that's correct. I believe that's, city council's goal is to, is to get the revenue. So. All right, so I'll leave, if any other questions or comments on that, I'd like you all to take, at least take another meeting to, to look at that.
Yeah.
And, and do your own reading on it. And then, I haven't reached out to the attorney yet, just because I didn't want to start expending city resources on it, but.
That was a question that I was.
At some point, I'd like to reach out to the attorney and say, hey, do you have a recommended code that we should look at?
So, I mean, we're gonna have to pay our attorney to write this up, so the coverage is correct.
It's correct.
And so that first year revenue that we potentially could gain is kind of a wash, maybe even year two.
I, I imagine it'll be 1,000 to 1,500 to pay, pay the attorney to write that up, probably.
I'd say we put it off for a couple of years and cut all the trees down up by the water plant and just mow them down and sell that lumber, and that'll give you more than a couple thousand dollars for the next few years.
Oh, no.
Why, why not?
Let's just mow down every park that we have in the city limits of Vader, down to the tree stumps and let it just sit up there and rock. No, it's a beautiful place up there. We mow down the trees, and it's just gonna kill the tops of them.
I know.
Put a trail through there with some park benches and some picnic tables. Come on, let's not kill nature for money.
Let's kill our neighborhood for money. Let's make it stand here for money.
No, if we're.
Let's make a motion, change it to a green dot.
Yeah, just change it to a green dot. There's ways to get around all that other stuff.
Change it to a green dot.
So I'll leave it with that, so you can all take a look at that and see what's important to you. Any other discussion on this, this meeting?
Seems like we could make it, we're accepting that we can open it, potential could be there, then the right ordinance where it's so restricting that it's pretty much impossible.
It would be, it wouldn't be worth your while doing it?
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion? Kind of falling apart here. I think Jason's done. All right. If that's it, then we go on to elected official comments. Any comments from elected officials? No? All right, on that, this meeting is adjourned to 6:52 P.O. Well, all right, on that, this meeting is adjourned to 6:52 PM.